Call alert, Town and Prescott Valley Work Study Session, February 20th, 2020. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Lori Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall Schumacher, present. Councilmember Dawn Packard.
Present.
Councilmember Marty Grossman.
Still here.
Councilmember Rick Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Laura Lee-Nye.
I'm definitely here.
And Mayor Kel Paguta.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Move straight into item three, Auditorium and Council Chambers HDMI Upgrade. Who do we got for this? Ryan, you're looking around for someone else, apparently.
There he is.
Hey, I saw Casey running into the civics, so he should be here shortly.
I appreciate that.
Timing is everything.
Good timing, Casey.
We were just waiting on you, Mr. Tanner, that's all.
That was a good grand entrance.
Thank you for putting me first, I appreciate it. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. Tonight, you have in front of you some information about a project that I'm going to be bringing forward with your blessing next week, under consent. And that is the HDMI upgrade for the room in which I now stand. When the library was built originally, all the audio and video infrastructure was done with VGA cabling, which was standard at the time. This standard has since changed to better stuff like HDMI. So that offers a better viewing experience, both for everybody that's out in the audience, up on the screens, as well as you on your monitors. You have made it known that, and I have witnessed myself, that the picture on these monitors is less than adequate for the things that you're trying to view. This, so this project that we're doing is going to be replacing all of the infrastructure in this room, from VGA to HDMI. It's going to be replacing all the equipment in the control room up above you to suit that HDMI infrastructure as well. They're going to be redoing the control panels and such to make sure that Fatima can switch between everything that she needs to show what needs to be shown. We did some testing, I brought the vendor in that we're looking at, which is Level 3 Audio/Video. They're down in Phoenix, we've used them for many years, I trust them very much. They do all of our maintenance on all of our video systems already, so I'm well-versed with them. So I brought them in to look at everything, and at the same time, they did a test where they hooked up all of your monitors to an HDMI signal, and much better. Somebody was, we were able to put an Excel spreadsheet even on a laptop here, and you could see it very well on your monitors, which right now, it's usually, I'm sure, pretty fuzzy and everything. So with a new system, that will be much clearer, everything up here will be much clearer. Now, obviously, if people are showing maps and things like that with very small writing, that's going to be dependent on the distance, obviously, between the projector and the screens. But it will even, it's going to look better as well with the changes. So this project also includes a downgrade of the signal for Channel 56, so that they don't have to replace all their cameras. So they're able to downgrade the HDMI signal to make it so that Channel 56 can still use the cameras as they do now, without having to basically put a camera up on the screen to show it. They can show that direct signal, so that will be better as well. Basically, the quote in front of you includes all of the equipment, all of the labor, travel, everything else. The amount that we got on the quote is under the budget that the library has for this particular project, which is nice. So at this point, I would be open to any questions that you might have about the project.
Is this Wi-Fi, or do you have to cable all this stuff?
All of this stuff has to be cabled, so the projectors and everything, and the infrastructure is all hardwire-type stuff.
This is going to be our video improvement, correct? It'll just be for visual, not our audio yet?
Yeah, audio is going to be remaining as is, this is for video-specific.
Gotcha. Vice Mayor.
Well, technologically, always moves faster than we can build our budgets. So my question is, is how current is this technology, and how long do you expect it will serve us well?
It is the current standard, I don't foresee, I mean, there's 4K and things like that, they are putting in, if you look at the equipment list. The projectors that they're putting in, 6,500 lumens, basically very bright, 5,200 on the two sides. As far as if you look at the equipment list, you can see, sorry, let me just get to it here. You'll see that there are two 4K digital media receiver and room controllers with scalers. So that is building in some future technology as well. So as much as we can at this point in time, for the money that we have budgeted, we are definitely getting stuff that's going to last a while.
Okay, my other question, it has to do with the system warranty. It's one of the paragraphs here says, "Manufacture warrants do not cover the cost of onsite diagnosis, removal, shipping, blah, 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 blah." But overall, are you okay?
Yes, they include, they include a year of full warranty-type service in it, where they do PMs on the system, preventative maintenance, check over the system. As I said, I've worked with these guys on a maintenance side of things for many years, and I trust them. So that's a year of that included. After that, we usually just budget some money for maintenance every year for the different rooms that we have audiovisual in, and they'll come in and do the same thing. If something broke after the warranty is out on the particular pieces of equipment, there would obviously be costs there, as well as cost for them to come out and replace something.
The only thing in that paragraph that bothered me, and maybe you can help me understand better, is they don't cover the cost, and I'm just going to jump right to the point, for reinstallation of defective equipment, and I didn't get that. If their equipment is, you know, not functioning properly, why wouldn't they take care of that?
I think they're saying that if we, I can verify with them before we sign off on this, but I think that's actually saying if we, for some odd reason, wanted to put that defective equipment back in, that they're not going to pay for that. If we got something replaced during the warranty period, they're obviously going to cover that, but I think they're talking about if we wanted to put something-
It does say reinstallation, but I wanted to make sure that I understood-
I'll make sure, I'll call them tomorrow and make sure on that, but I'm pretty sure that means if we wanted to put something old back in, that they're not going to do that for free.
I like clarity.
Sure, no problem.
Councilwoman Hutt.
So Casey, on the last page, which is the budget page, and you kind of referred to this, the proactive maintenance, it's for five years. What happens after five years?
I think that's just giving you a cost, that's giving us a cost, if we want to have proactive maintenance for five-year period, that's what it's going to cost. They'll, I've worked with these guys, they continue to do maintenance on this building, and this building's been in longer than five years, so they have no problem doing that. I think they're just basically saying that if we want to do a five-year agreement with them, that that's the, that would be the cost of this particular room. But we have other rooms in this building, so I tend to not want to necessarily do that, because we do other rooms at the same time.
So we're not planning on doing the five-year maintenance?
I wasn't planning on it, no. I usually get a budget number for them for one year at a time, because I like to get all of the rooms that we do.
Yeah.
Thank you, Casey.
Anything else, Council?
Mr. Trachowski. Casey, I, the reading between the lines, I think the Vice Mayor was saying, "If you come back wanting newer, latest and greatest technology before 10 years have lapsed, she's going to strangle you."
I don't know if I can promise 10 years, but we'll do what we can, definitely.
This technology is 10 years old.
Well, no, that's probably going to work, then.
I will, if you even-
Thank you.
Any other questions? That's about it, sir.
Thank you.
We're going to juggle things around, we're going to actually skip over Ms. Katie, and we're going to take care of our guests this evening, and move to 3C, CIMPO 2045 Regional Transportation Plan, submitted by Mr. Davis.
Good evening, Mayor Council, with pleasure tonight, I'm happy to present the CYMPO, or the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'm going to use the acronym CIMPO, it's easier. But every five years, through the federal agency, through the member agencies of CIMPO, we do a transportation plan update, it's a regional transportation plan, so every five years. This plan actually looks out to the horizon year of 2045, so keep in mind, this is the very much long-range plan, and we do this every five years. So the last plan was the 2040 plan, and with the federal dollars we get, Chris Bridges, with the Administrator for CYMPO, is here tonight. But through his lead and direction, we have culminated a study, it started in November of 19, so we've been a little more than a year with the study. So keep in mind, the land use that we do through our general plan generates the trips, that they, the science that the consultant uses generates the car trip, so to speak, with future growth scenarios that you do. And so when you do this every five years, you can see where you grew, where you went, what didn't grow, what grew faster. So we do that every year, so we'd like to make sure we continue to upgrade what they call the traffic model. And with that traffic model, you show the public, and we gain public input to see where we spend our available roadway dollars. So what's important is, public input on this study is very, very important. So we took public input throughout the study, using the new social media, as we talked with Casey here, some of the new technologies today with, I think we used about anything. However anybody wanted to communicate, they were able to do that through the social media. I know we did go to a couple of job fairs, Chris did, in order to get some input from the public and said, "What do you think?" So where we're at today is, there was a public open house last Wednesday, I know some council people attended. That was actually a regional one, we had it on our PD conference room over there, but that was a public open house, just as a last-disk effort to make sure this is a public document, we take a public comment there. So throughout the study, we actually had some town news articles, and our peer article went out in the water bills. Throughout the study, we actually had articles entered in April, May, and then also January, to advise people to come to the public open house if they choose. So I think we've had plenty of public outreach to make this a very good document. So where we're at today is, we have the, what's called the final draft plan. Technical staff has provided input basically every couple of months throughout this, what, 16-month study, and public inputs included, and all the science that the transportation professionals put into it is also in this particular book. So AECom was a selected transportation consultant, we have Kate Bondi with us tonight, in addition to Dylan Kennedy, they were the project managers, and they have a presentation tonight to give you some highlights, and once again, see what council thinks of the study and take any input you may have. So with that, we'll have Kate come up, and she's got some slides she wants to show, and discuss how they conducted the study.
Kate, Dylan?
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Wait till Dylan gets this up for me. Thank you for having us this evening, we're really excited about this plan. We were able, it was actually one of my favorite studies I've ever worked on, first with Norm and the other TAC members. It was a really interesting study, and we were able to do a lot of new things and new technology within this study. So a little review of what CIMPO is, it's all those member agencies there, and the CIMPO, MPO, together with those member agencies, are looking at cooperatively planning the transportation future for Yavapai County. The central Yavapai County region. This CIMPO was established in June of 2003 by the federal mandate, once the region got more than 50,000-plus people within it. So as Norm mentioned, this plan has to be updated every five years, that's a federal mandate. And so with this plan, as again, Norm mentioned, we look at the volumes, we looked at projections, we take into account all the developments that are coming in. And previously, in all the previous plans, that's a main objective of what we looked at. We said, "What is the volume, what is the volume in the future, what are the needs today for vehicles, and what are the needs in the future for vehicles?" We did a lot, we approached it in a different manner this time, we did a more holistic view of it. So we looked at not only the vehicleer needs, we looked at all the different needs, from a multimodal perspective, bikes and Peds, from pavement, from bridge assets. So did a much more performance-based plan, looking at that. And that puts us in line with what is going on federally, with the new acts coming out, and making sure that as a region, we're in line with how the feds and the states are looking at and giving federal money to look at how are you, how are you improving the assets that you have today with these transportation improvements? So when we went through this process, we looked at a vision and a goal, and then we went forward, looked at existing and future conditions, we did it, converted those to needs, looked at recommended investment choices, and came up with a recommended plan. We used our technical advisory committee, as Norm stated, every, throughout the entire project, they were integral, reviewing everything, having meetings, getting everyone's input. Also on that TAC was not only member agencies, but also EMAC, which is the environmental, environmental committee that is part of CIMPO. So with that, we had our 25-year plan, which used at the vision and goals to begin with, we established, and those were to make a needs-place plan, so again, performance-based, looking at emphasis at not only capacity, but also preservation. We looked at incorporating forward-thinking transportation planning processes, and we accounted for multimodal and wildlife considerations within this plan. So our public engagement summary, so this is a great success for us. We normally, and in the past plan, had two sessions of public meetings, and it was in-house, in-person, public meetings, they came, and we did a lot of the similar outreach, trying to just to get people to that public meeting. In the last 2040 RTP update, we had a total, with all of our comments from this public meeting, from the whole public open time that they can make comments, 120 total recommend, or comments, from this online engagement, which people were able to participate whenever they wanted, from wherever they wanted, on their phones, on their iPads, on their computers. We went out to the different, to job fairs, to different places like that, and we had 1,400 comments. So that was a real great success for us, it was over 1,000% increase in participation. And not only was it an increase in participation, but it was also much more, the information was much more usable into the plan, and incorporated into the plan, and not only into the plan, but also given to the member agencies, and being able to use for anything else also from that standpoint. So we looked at being able to incorporate such things as the common locations, so there's pinpoints, and we could cluster those locations and see, oh, everybody's saying there's a safety issue here, and does that correlate to the projects that we're already looking at? And so that was a really good thing that we were able to do. What are the most important regional corridors for the public? So what do they consider those regional corridors most important, and is that where our projects are really going? And then what are the preferred types of improvements also? So for the performance-based planning, like I mentioned, we didn't just look at the travel demand model, we also looked at pavement. What is the pavement condition from each of the different agencies? Bridges, what is the structural integrity of the bridges? Same with culverts, and then from safety, looking at five-year crash data, that was also looked at, that data through the Strategic Highway Safety Plan that CIMPO participated in with NACOG. And so we looked at the total crash rates within those safety crash data, and looking at the fatal and incapacitating crash rates, along with intersection crashes, to make sure that we didn't miss anything, if there's a specific intersection that had high crashes. From a mobility standpoint, we looked at, still looked at those existing and future volumes and level of service with those developments. But in addition to that, we looked at something called travel time and planning time, which takes into account speeds. So it's looking at, what is the speed on the roadway in typical congestion, and then what is the speed on the roadway if there's an incident? So looking at 95th percentile kind of speeds on there, and kind of seeing what kind of issues mobility has in that sense. From bicycle and pedestrian, we did an inventory of the existing bicycle and pedestrian facilities, so looking at paved shoulders, where are bike lanes, where are sidewalks and those shared-use paths? And so that was something really new for this plan that we had never done before. In addition, we looked at almost a multimodal demand model, what I mean by that, we kind of said, "Well, there's activity centers here, there's libraries here, there's park here." And so seeing which different of the regional roadways weren't having those type of facilities on them to establish and need. So what did the performance look like? One thing I want to mention on this is, we're looking at the regional transportation roadway, so established with the TAC, what those regional roadways were, and we segmented them and came up with the operations. So from a pavement perspective, we're looking at 413.5 lane miles of good pavement. And I want to mention one thing, from a pavement, as far as performance, it is at a moment in time, because we are gathering data, and that's when the project started, and so that's when the information was good. And from all of them, pavement's the one that actually gets older faster. From bridges and culverts, there's not many regional bridges and culverts, there's 34 regional bridges, 88% of them are in good condition, 33 culverts, with a high majority of those also in good position, uh, condition. From a safety perspective, the existing for fatal and incapacitating and the total crash rates, both of those were in the average range. From the mobility standpoint for level of service, the existing had 325 lane miles, so 77% of the regional network had a good level of service, with only 3% in poor, that's existing. However, in 2045, if the only projects that were implemented were the funded projects that are already funded and programmed, that would deteriorate, and you'd end up with 45% in good condition, and both the fair and the poor would increase. From a multimodal perspective, we inventoried 119 centerline miles of bicycle facilities, and 96 miles of those pedestrian facilities. So the overall needs process, so we went and we measured all these things and saw the performance, we compared them to needs by saying, "Where should you be in the future, and what's that gap?" So we established, "Where are you today, where should, where would it be good for you to be in the future," and established a need from there, so low needs, medium needs and high needs. Then we collected all the projects with the TAC, from looking in 20, 15 years' worth of plans, you've done a lot of planning studies, so take all those projects from all those different plans and resources, combed out all the things that had already been implemented, which was quite a few things, and looked at what's still warranted in the area. We also developed new projects, such as adaptive signal technology, so some newer technology-type of projects, which is kind of tying together the different intersections, making sure on a corridor that you would get green, but the intersections talk to each other, so that's the adaptive signal-type of projects. We also, at this point, is where we took that public comment and made sure, hey, the public has a real cluster at this one location and intersection, is there a project that we didn't identify here? And so we added a couple of projects that way, too. We took those projects, ran them through a solution evaluation and prioritization, and we came up with lower, medium, higher, medium, lower project priorities. And then we established a recommended investment choice, which I'll go into it a little bit more, and an implementation strategy. So in that draft plan, from an implementation strategy, it's going over more of the things, such as the wildlife, and how to make sure those get included as these projects move forward, and we know that's really important for the community. So this is the needs, so from a needs, this is just a high level, some of the top-ranked overall need segments, again, these are regional corridors in a holistically region, and looking at an overall need, some of the highest need areas we had were for mobility and safety. So you can kind of see some of the different roadways on there, SR 69 and Lake Shore Drive and 89A, just outside of the town, all come up on there. Most of the safety needs did come at, were driving some of the higher need segments. So project prioritization methodology, so just seeing, how did we really go through this? And if you read the plan, you'll see that we prioritize all these different types of projects. So we looked at, okay, if we build this project and we put it back through the system, does it move that needle? Does it really make a difference to the assets that you already have on the ground? We looked at, okay, if it does that, then what is the planning cost estimate? How much does it cost for that? So being able to see more of a benefit-cost kind of ratio, but benefit to the system and to the performance. We included different factors, such as vehicle miles traveled, to give a little bit of weight, also improvement of service life. So some of those technologies or some of those smaller type of projects, although they cost less, they don't last as long. So if you add a lane, or you build a brand-new roadway, it's going to last a lot longer than some of those smaller type of projects, but it'll cost more. So there's a factor for that. And then we also looked at a factor for the original need. So we, if there was a high need somewhere on a segment, and there was a project there, it got a bump in a weight for that. And the last thing we looked at was risk. So we want to make sure that we're considering risks, and making sure, such as risks for, what's the probability of something happening if you don't implement projects, and then what's the severity? So the easiest way to explain that is thinking of a bridge, so what's the probability if a bridge is in need of repair, that something will happen, and then what is the severity? It could be pretty severe if something isn't implemented into that. So project recommendations, so we looked at the project recommendations into three categories, in funding categories, preservation, modernization and expansion. And this coincides also with the state's categories that they're putting together also, and they're, they have in their long-range transportation plan. So with these categories, I'm going to quickly go over like what they mean and what type of projects. So preservation is projects that preserve the transportation infrastructure by mitigating assets. So that's mainly pavement and bridges, and rehab on those, it's not maintenance, it's not potholing, it's actually rehabbing, putting a mill and a fill on a project. The other easy one is expansion. So this expansion is projects that add roadway capacity, through either new roadways, a brand-new roadway, adding lanes to a roadway, or in a case of a bridge, it's adding a brand-new structure at a bridge, reconstructing that whole thing. So that's expansion. So what's modernizations, everything else? It's those projects that improve travel efficiency- It's those projects that improve travel efficiency or safety, but don't let, add actual capacity on a roadway, the lane capacity, through capacity. So all the safety countermeasures are included in those, technology improvements are included in that kind of projects and in intersections. So some examples, again, that adaptive signal would be one example of that, adding a rumble strip in the middle of the road, adding signs on the side for some, you know, signal ahead, that type of thing. Intersection improvements include adding a turn lane, so that would count as a modernization project, even adding a roundabout would be a modernization type of project. So what projects did we have included in this? We had 25 modernization projects and 35 expansion projects. So we were able to collect a really good number of projects with everyone. Some of the top-ranked ones from the town of Prescott were the SR 69 and Glassford Hill Road. We had a signal timing project there, and that actually came from the public, saying that there was issues at that intersection and safety and us coming up and talking, well, maybe we could improve signal timing and timing it with other, work together with ADOT and the town and improve this, the signal timings on there. And then SR 69 Adaptive Signal System, a Glassford Hill Adaptive Signal System. And then from the expansion, SR 69 Widening and Glassford Hill Widening, which is just completing the third lane on Glassford Hill, where it's not currently there. So big portion of the plan is our recommended investment choice. So it is taking those three pots of funding, so those funding categories, and saying, as a region and as a plan, and where should we be heading and making sure that what seems appropriate as far as those funding buckets? And so from there, we looked at the current and future performance, which I've already talked about, but we looked at, what do those percentages look like 10 years from now? Where was the region spending those monies on that or region, on the regional roadway system? Where does the current program come with those? So we collected from each of the different agencies, how much their program is and how did the buckets, how did the projects fit into those different buckets? We took public input, so we gave, in one of the modules online, we said, here's $100, where would you spend that money? And then we also had a workshop with the executive board and TAC, and we gave them marbles and said, here's some jars, here's the three jars, put it into each of the different areas, you only get so many marbles, so where would you put them? Then we counted the marbles, and we had a tool with us that said, okay, if this is where you went with these percentages, you know, we counted the marbles and divided them up, if this is what you recommended, here's the impact on the system. So we put it through a tool that showed them, well, if you don't put, you know, if you only put 10% in preservation, you know, where is your preservation going to go? It will deteriorate and at what rate? So we ended up with this draft recommended percentages. So we have 45% recommended in preservation, 30% in expansion, and 25% in modernization. How does that relate to what you have been doing? So the 45% is around what the preservation is currently, and everybody's investing that level, and it seems to be, you know, it seems to be working, everything seemed appropriate. What's different is actually the expansion and modernization. Historically, as a region on these regional facilities, there's been more investment percentage-wise than that 30 on expansion and not as much on that modernization. And so that's what this would do, is kind of move it to more of recommending and trying to guide it to a little bit more modernization verse, than has historically been. You guys, as Prescott Valley, as a town, if you look at your current plan, you're already doing those type of things. If you look at your current plan, some of the planned program projects, such as Viewpoint Drive, that project is a modernization project. And also the SR, the Glassford Hill at 89A, there's a right, free right-hand turn, that project is also a modernization project. We are looking at the current modernization projects, your town had more, most of those modernization projects that are in the current plans. So Norm said most of what I was going to say for this slide, which is, where are we now? Thank you for hosting and having us for our public meeting. We had a pretty good turnout. I think we had about 80-plus people come to that meeting, and so we are in the public comment period. We have an online report with an opportunity for people to comment there. We have also left, for people that don't have computers or access, we've left hard copies of them at each of the libraries. So your library has five copies so that someone can check it out and leave their comments in an envelope, and we'll be collecting all of that after March 4th. From there, we'll incorporate those comments into a finalized plan, and we will be putting that for consideration of adoption by the executive board on March 25th. So questions or comments?
Vice Mayor.
Every time I see Highway 69 on any kind of report, I get frustrated and confused because the citizens are always, you know, after us to do something, and we can do little to nothing. So how did that factor in with the data that you got here? Because I noticed that I saw 69 twice.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, yes, you see 69 twice in a couple of different areas on there. It does have both safety and mobility issues. It factored in in different ways. It also was one of the regional roadways that the public thought was important, one of the most important ones. From a standpoint of this, I feel like one of our, you know, you can't, you're saying it's hard to fix, and it is hard because in most areas, it's already three lanes, there's a lot of cars, and there's a lot going on. One of the things is that we have for a project that we think would help, and it actually scored one of the highest ones, is the adaptive signals. It's new technology, it's something different. It has proven benefits for both a safety and a mobility, and so, and it costs way less than adding a lane, too. And so some of those are playing into it. Again, the projects, this time, we're not saying by 2040, build these projects. All we're doing is we have a list of projects in there that we've collected that we think will help move the needle in different aspects, and we've prioritized those projects to help say, well, we've looked through the assets, and so we've done this performance, and we've done a benefit cost, which means that these higher-ranked projects might be more able to get grants and federal funding. And so that's what the ranking is.
All right. I didn't ask my question well.
Okay.
Towns and cities cannot do anything about state highways. How do you factor that in with these recommendations? Because something does need to be done, but we have approached for many years and get nowhere. Or state highway being 69.
So for that, I would say, having the recommendations in the plan help, having things that could help go for grants would help. ADOT is on the TAC, so they do see the data and do see the deficiencies, and having them be a part of the process helps. And see, again, one of, some of the projects, such as that safety project we had, or not the safety, sorry, the adaptive signal, really scored really, really high. And so there is potential in that if there is area to go after funds in the future. Do you have anything to add, Chris?
Chris deals with it all the time.
Sorry, I know he hasn't been able to.
Chris knows exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah. And the harsh reality of transportation funding in the state of Arizona is, the state does not generate enough revenue to be able to fix or pay for all of these things. We just showed you a list of 60 projects that total over $1 billion to build, just in the Simbo 400-square-mile boundary, okay? That's just us. These needs are everywhere, and State Route 69, as important as it is, and it was overwhelming from the public comment that 69 was, they wanted, the public wants to see work done on it. So this study will actually help, like Kate's saying, yeah, we can go towards grants and things like that, but the harsh reality is, is that we need expansion dollars from the state of Arizona to be able to fix 69 for the longer term, like what Kate was saying, you know, adding a lane's going to give you a longer-term fix than doing the adaptive signals, but the adaptive signals help immediately. So I can take this information and I can go to the state transportation board, but the reality is, is there are four expansion projects in the entire state outside of Phoenix and Tucson over the next four years, and in year five and moving forward, there will be zero. It is all going to modernization and pavement preservation, because that's all we can afford to do as a state.
Mr. Charkowski?
Yeah, Chris, you know, we all understand that. We understand the realities of funding today. This is a visionary document.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? And things will evolve over time. And so my question is, is there a high priority on the replacement of Highway 69 in this document? High priority, i.e. meaning the connection from I-17 into the Quad City area. High priority. We are very fortunate in that we have had transportation plans that have been very, very clear in where we want to be 10 years, 15, 20 years down the road. Case in point, the 1985 Parsons Brinkerhoff Study that identified a route that needed to connect Highway 69 and Highway 89. It's, it was unnamed, and voila, you have a Glassford Hill Road. Okay? How long down the road after its identification was it built? 15 years.
Correct.
Okay? And so vision is what this document really needs to have, much less concern with present-day finances. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves way behind the eight ball 20 years from now.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? And that is going ahead and identifying routes like the second route off of I-17 and also the route that connects us to I-40. And both of those, we started the planning on those in 1995. And so it really needs, I believe, to take a very high place on this when you've got a threshold of 2045 as the end result. And so things like identification of right-of-way, acquisition of right-of-way, all those kinds of things that take years are really important. And so I really understand and appreciate the lack of federal and state funding today, but that's going to change. And so a visionary document is, is good. I really appreciate all the work that's been done on this and routes identified, but we need to have that vision because without it, we're going to find ourselves like a state to the west of us, which is left with only widening existing routes. And that's not acceptable.
Right. And I think, you know, to hit on what Larry's saying is, historically, this region has been very progressive and has done an excellent job. I mean, Glassford Hill Road, right? But Fane Road Widening, 89A construction, I mean, all of this started 15, 20 years ago, and yeah, and it's out there now. And we do still have those elements, right? But we also do look at the additional capacity on existing, and what can we leverage, and what can we move towards? And we're at a critical part with the Simbo Board in that we used to take our Simbo dollars and then, and go to ADOT and say, hey, we will pay for a design if you pay for construction, or we'll chip in for, for part of construction, we'll even bring some local money, maybe from county or city or town, and we'll try to make this happen collectively. So that opportunity currently isn't happening, but this document does help us in the future to be able to, when those funding sources pop up and become available, we're now looking at getting each of these projects that are in here much further along in the process from a planning perspective, so we have good cost estimates, so we can go after those big dollars, right? We know what right-of-way issues are going to be popping up with these things. No other region is doing those. We're the only MPO doing that. Most of the other POs, they get their small amount of money. We get $650,000. Flagstaff, I think, gets $500,000. They put it in a sidewalk project, and they just spread it around with whatever their member agencies are. We've historically been very successful trying to turn our dollars into bigger projects. I think the life of Simbo, doesn't even include pre-Simbo, is $13 million has come to Simbo, we've turned that into 125 million of construction. Right? So that's, that's our history, and I'd like to still be doing that, right? This does give us some flexibility to be able to look at some other, other than just expansion, that we can look at safety, addressing current capacity. It's just a bigger view than we've ever had before.
And if I could, Chris, you bring up a really good point. When we ended up, through the TPO, widening 69 from a two-lane cow path, ADOT told us we have no money.
Right.
When we ended up creating Fane Road, ADOT said, we have no money. Pioneer Parkway, we have no money.
Right.
Glassford Hill Road. All, the environment has not changed in the last 30 years, except we need to, instead of narrowing our vision, being constrained by existing dollars today, expand the vision because somehow or other, we were able to make it work. And you can see those results around you, so thank you for that.
Yep, thank you.
Councilman?
I have a question for our fabulous AE Comm presenter. Congratulations on the response rate. That was great.
Thank you.
And my question is, do you know percentage-wise, how much was more Prescott Valley and how much was Prescott?
We do not.
Okay.
We don't get a lot of that data, no.
I just, I just wondered when I saw the rankings, you know, how that, yeah.
The responses or the responses?
The responses.
No. We have, so some of them were anonymous, some of them left. We encouraged them by, encouraged them to leave their email addresses and things like that, but we don't have location data. It's, the way that it works is that they don't, they don't have locations, because a lot of them did them on their cell phones and that kind of thing. But we just, we have some in order to build the, the project database of outreach, but that's about all.
So I have one more question. Why was this your favorite project so far?
Felt like it was doing something new that the region had, and looking at it holistically. Dylan and I have both talked about it really extensively, and, you know, we came into the project with an idea and a vision on how we would implement it and working through it, and really working with the TAC members and working with Chris and being like, okay, how will this really work? What is most beneficial to using the money that we are spending on the project? What is going to be beneficial to each of the different agencies? So if you see in the back, we took each of some of the projects that are higher-ranked and tried to say, where did the project come from? Here's a hyperlink to the previous studies that have been done. Here's some more information, and that was something that we said, would this be useful for you? So those are the type of things and why we really liked it.
Again, reiterate that, great job on the, just getting input. I mean, in over 10 years, it's just amazing and goes to show you what technology and social media can do.
Yeah. And this region likes Facebook.
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I didn't hear you.
So our Facebook pushes increase those participation every time.
That's great. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
The energy in the room last week over there was healthy, and people were getting acquainted with one another that had never met one another before. And so my point is, there was a secondary benefit to having that. And I was there for almost the entire time, and I, what I observed, I was very pleased, very pleased.
Yeah, we tried to take a holistic, again, approach to the public, so trying to do, you know, everyone can access it at their home, but then still including the in-person, which was great and a great turnout for us. And then, like I said, trying to reach out to those who can't access it by putting the in the libraries, and everybody's been really helpful getting the word out and getting information to however we need it.
Great. Nothing else? Thank you, guys. Great job.
Thank you.
Great presentation. Move on. Ms., Removal Library Fines and Fee Presentation.
I am so excited to be here tonight. So excited to talk about my favorite thing, the library, and getting rid of something that has really been a barrier in service to the community. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, thank you so much for having me tonight. I really am glad to be here to... I really am glad to be here to talk about this. So let's talk about going fine-free. So one of the things, there are three main assumptions with fines, the three main assumptions with charging library fines. Fines bring back materials faster, fines generate revenue for the library, and fines teach responsibility. Now, published research and growing amount of recent evidence show that none of these assumptions are true at all, none. So let me give you some background. Actually, the staff have been looking at getting rid of fines for years now. Super tall. In 2018, we did our big push for our community assessment. We garnered feedback from the citizens and data on this topic, and we interviewed colleagues from other library systems who have gone fine-free. And based on this research, us, the library, Mayor Palguda, and you, Counsel, believe that you proposed to eliminate fines. And the last seven years since I've been here, we did the Food for Fines every December where people would bring in their food to get rid of fines. E-materials like eBooks and digital magazines don't have fines assessed on them. And recently, we did the Building Bright Futures Library Card Program where the first graders do not accrue fines on their account. So we are already kind of trying to push that. Still, unfortunately, many people remain unable to check out materials. Now, this map, thanks to Larry Prentice and Tyler Lehman from the GIS Department. This is a map, it looks really horrible, and if you want to see what it really looks like, this is an overlay of two areas, Mountain Park, Mountain Valley Park, and Castle Canyon Mesa. All those little tiny green dots, and some are like giant, are people in those areas that cannot use the library because they have fines and fees on their account. And those are the areas and the communities that need our services the most. So the impact of fines. Again, while we were gathering data from our community assessment, in our community conversations, and in our surveys, these are some of the impacts of the fines that the community let us know. A lot of them were single mothers or large families who, we have, you know, the stay-at-home mom, they have five kids, and all the kids had fines on their cards, and she wasn't able to use the library. So it was a huge impact and something that has value to them and the family, they weren't able to use our library. So we know, late fines are not effective. Studies have shown that small fines do not have any impact on return rates. I have data from many, many libraries that have gotten their, done their year with no fines, and especially Colorado State Library wrote a paper that the scant research on the value and impact of library fines and fees does not indicate a clear benefit of administering these policies, and they may be costly to enforce. And actually, they are costly to enforce. Karen Smith in HR did a study for us, and she estimates that it takes about $80,000 to collect $11,000 in fines. And in the last two years, library late fees collected here have dropped significantly in the last two years. And all the libraries that are not charging fines, library users, of course, still need to return their items. Most libraries that eliminated fines still block accounts for materials returned, so there is that, they can't use their card, the repercussion. And we will, Prescott Valley Library will still continue to collect fees for lost and damaged materials, and we will still use our materials recovery company. So this is only a smattering of libraries throughout the United States that have gone fine-free. I have the link down there that you can go to, and you can hone in on all the libraries throughout the United States that have gone fine-free. You'll notice in Maricopa County, public library system is fine-free. The Yavapai County Free Library District is fine-free. Camp Verde has gone fine-free, and I'll talk about that, and I didn't put them up there, and we're hoping that Prescott Valley will be on that map soon, too. So the support. I was, had the great pleasure to talk to Peter Bloomberg from the Salt Lake City Public Library last year about his program. I met him in person, and we talked about being fine-free. And they're in the middle of Salt Lake City, and they have a huge homeless population. And he was very proud to be fine-free because not only did it help the homeless population, but some of the other vulnerable communities and people that are in that environment. So they were able to come back to the library and use it. And of course, Kathy Helman, who's the library director at Camp Verde Community Library, went fine-free seven months ago, and it's just some of the quotes. And then, of course, Bill Gates, who's the chairman of the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors, District 3 for Maricopa County Library System. They all are really happy, and all four going fine-free. So what are the concerns of eliminating fines? The mayor had a great question that he posed a couple months ago about going fine-free. And these, not only, Prescott Valley wasn't the only library, but these concerns also came up at all the other libraries that have gone fine-free. So the big thing is the concerns that materials will be returned late and not be available for others to use. And will they come back at all? Of course. So again, while late returns are a reality facing every library community, none of the libraries which have eliminated overdue fines have experienced increases in late returns, longer hold times, or gaps in the collection. In fact, Salt Lake City Public Library saw its late return rate drop from 9% to 4% following fine elimination. So, and that was pretty much the standard with most of the libraries that I talked to who went fine-free. They either had no change, or there was a significant change in the return rate. Of course, will our materials come back slowly? Again, research from these libraries that have gone fine-free show that people, it's the same before and after they go fine-free, there's little or no change. And one of the questions somebody brought up is, how is it going to affect our relationship with the Yavapai Library Network? It's not. Camp Verde's already gone fine-free. The Yavapai Free Library District has never charged fines. So we share books, we don't have any issues. It's not an issue. So I say to you, just say no to library fines. Any questions? Need data? What do you need? What do you want?
So I first want to say, I just appreciate you throwing the gift in because I would have been disappointed if we got to this point and it wasn't there.
I know, right? I was real serious until the end.
So thank you for that. I just want to, I'll just start off the discussion with this. If you could, Doug Cook with the Courier is in the back there, and I want to make sure that the information and the data that you presented right now gets to him so he cannot make any mistake in regards to how that's going to be reported.
Right, no mistakes in that.
Important information, because it's so easy for the public to just make assumptions and guesses on how things are. But I'm so data-driven and stat-driven, you can't argue with those numbers. And from the history of what we've seen other places, it just says a lot. So presuming what's going to happen is just, it's just not effective for this dialogue. So thank you for that. And one of the big things I wanted to mention is, and thanks to Karen Smith back there for putting together the $80,000 worth of, you know, labor and whatever else we had involved.
Staff time.
To generate $11,000. I mean, if we were a business in the private community, we'd be bankrupt.
Right.
So great job on that, and that just spells it all out there. It's just not worth it.
Right.
So, and also props to you for getting the word "smattering" into your presentation. That's a great job on that. With that being said, Vice Mayor?
You know why I'm excited about this? There's a stigma connected with this.
Yes.
And it ruins it, as you commented, for children. And there are even circumstances, and I'm going to use a very personal thing that just happened to me in January. Most everybody knows I was in an automobile accident. Well, I didn't even know where my car was towed to, and I knew my books were overdue. And I was getting all stressed out about getting our library books back here. Well, I'm a mature adult, and I solved it and I fixed it. But imagine a child being distressed.
Right.
And that's enough reason right there for us to stop this.
Right.
Counselor?
I hope that we're also considering, or part of this consideration, is that we forgive all existing fines.
Absolutely.
All right.
Yes.
So we start off fresh.
We'll start off fresh, wipe it clean. Yes.
Counselor?
You answered all of, most of my concerns and questions. The thing I have is, at what point is a book considered lost or stolen, and what's the process for that?
So with our library board of trustees, we've written a policy that after 30 days, an item is, an account will be blocked. So once a patron has a book that's over 30 days late, they can't use their account. Now, once the book is 60 days overdue, their account will be charged for the replacement of the item, and their account will then be subject to our collection agency, which is the standard as right now. So we really haven't changed that, except the 30 days the patron's account is blocked.
Vice Mayor?
I see Donna Morgan out there. I'm wondering, are you totally supported?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Our, yes, our library board, I mean, they had a lot of great questions and just, you know, wanted us to be fiscally responsible.
Sure.
Because we do it anyway.
Right.
And one of the things that you brought up, the stats show that it still benefits the library. It's not going to be negatively affected.
Not at all.
Ma'am, you have something? I usually don't open it up, but I saw you raise your hand, so.
I just wanted to say, Casey, very good on the positive. And we asked, um, the positive, we also asked for information about the negative. There wasn't.
Sure.
So that we have, um, we.
And one of the things, too, is if Casey comes back to us in a year and says, this has been a complete disaster, we have, no one's doing anything, it's just turned into just chaos out there. It can always change.
Right. And I will say, libraries have not gone back. The libraries that have gone fine-free have not gone back.
You hear that, Doug?
I also have a comment for Doug. We're a family-friendly, supportive community.
Yes.
There's just another way we're supporting our families.
Exactly.
And I don't need to remind Counsel, if you looked at that map, the cluster map in regards to how it played out, it is not a high-income area of our towns, and those are the people that are getting affected by this.
Yes.
And that's what makes it so important, I believe, so.
I had one quick question. So we're going to be using basically an honor system. When you were talking about the people that are going to be notified for late turning in after 30 days or 60 days, if at any time that they make good on their account, then that's relieved, correct?
Right, yes. So once they return their items back, their account is clear. And even once the items are, they are sent to lost. As long as they return them two weeks before, there's a, there's a letter that goes out that lets them know, two weeks they'll be sent to collection. So if they return those within the two weeks, their account is clear.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? Great, great job, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our final item, rental tax discussion. Ms. Katie, sorry for keeping you waiting on this one, but you didn't bring a guest, so that's how you got bumped in this.
So as you all know, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. As you all know, we are primarily sales tax-based as far as our revenue goes, and from time to time, it is important to review potential sources of revenue that we are not currently accessing. And with that, it's been a topic of discussion over a few of the budget retreats that perhaps there would be a potential interest in taking a rental tax, whether it's commercial, residential, or both, to the voters for a change. A little bit about the history of rental tax. Since we adopted the tax code in 1987, we have had a 0% tax rate on both residential and commercial rentals in the town of Prescott Valley. And going after 2016, when the voters passed in the general election that we would need to take any future tax increases to the voters, that has dictated that if we want to change that 0% rate, we do need to go before the voters to do that. Comparable municipalities, 74 out of 91 municipalities in Arizona collect a residential rental tax, and 87 out of 91 collect a commercial rental tax. Only three of the 91 don't collect either, and they are Prescott Valley, Oro Valley, as well as Lake Havasu City. So we are in the minority there, which might not dictate the policy on this, but it does show that we are one of the few that don't currently. This next slide is some financial data and estimates, and we'll get into the estimates that are shown for Prescott Valley in the next few sets of slides. Primarily, what we're looking at is if we were to tax commercial rental revenue at the current tax rate, we'd be looking at approximately 1.2 million additional sales tax revenues that we would be bringing into the general fund. Additionally, if we were to tax residential rental, that would bring approximately 2.4 million, for a total of around $3.6 million added to the general fund. And these are estimates, and I'll go through our assumptions in gathering that data. I've shown it here to taxable rental sales for other communities because the tax collected varies based on their individual tax rates and what they collect. Additionally, some cities and towns like Sierra Vista listed up here, as well as Maricopa, only tax residential rentals if there are three or more, where the Prescott Valley would, well, we'll show you the proposals for that, but Prescott, Apache Junction, both have one or more rentals, and they're taxable for residential, and Bullhead City doesn't tax residential rental. So for commercial rental tax, how we calculated our estimates for this were based on data that we obtained from the county assessor's office. We looked at the total square footage of commercial rental in the town of Prescott Valley limits, and we discounted that by businesses that we knew to be owner-occupied properties. So we discounted that by about 1.7 million square feet, and then discounted it again by about 1.2 million, so that totaled about 43% of a reduction based on those properties that are owner-occupied, where they're not required to pay that tax, obviously, as well as those that are vacant or not rental properties currently. We estimated that annual commercial rent per square foot at $11.50. That is an average of what we looked at when we looked at market prices online. So there, again, there's a lot of variables in here that will, you know, as we move through this process, we may be able to narrow down it, or if this process went through, we would see those actual tax collections. And the tax rate is estimated at the current Prescott Valley rate of 2.83%. So a couple of options are to have no change and keep the 0% tax rate, tax at the 2.83% with the voter approval, or even since we are having to take it to the voters, there would be an option of suggesting a different tax rate as well. So that could be another alternative there. Some considerations to keep in mind, that the commercial rental tax could potentially be a deterrent for businesses looking to relocate to the area. Additionally, smaller businesses are less likely to own their commercial space, they're more likely to lease, so it could have more of an impact on smaller businesses. And as we discussed, the estimated revenue is subject to change based on a variety of factors, as well as the occupancy and vacancy rates. And the town would need to pay for the cost of the election for the proposal, so that would, if we move forward with this, we would really suggest it would be on the November ballot, so that would be our suggestion. As well as, if it is approved by the voters, we should really monitor this revenue stream for about a year prior to trying to secure any bond funds from that. So the next section for residential rental tax, again, we gathered the data from the county assessor's office, and there's approximately 5,200 residential rental units in Prescott Valley. Reduce that by about a 10% vacancy or misclassified property data. Sometimes people don't update that data with the Sometimes people don't update that data with the County Assessors' Offices frequently. And we set monthly rent rates based on the market research, splitting it out into a variety of sizes to assign different rental values for different square-footage properties. Additionally, there's some options here. There's no change, and we wouldn't tax anything. There's the tax, the rental units at 2.83% with the voter approval. Or we could also change the tax code to tax three or more rentals, or two or more rentals. And that would, again, go to voter approval for the tax rate on it. An additional option is a varied tax rate, just like on the commercial side as well. Some considerations for residential, similarly to commercial, the cost of the election, as well as, in the past, the state legislature has seen a variety of bills proposed that proposed to either restrict or eliminate residential rental tax. In fact, in 2015, there was a bill to completely eliminate the tax, and it was not successful, but that has been a topic of conversation at the legislature, and it may be something to consider, that if we did adopt it, it is a potential revenue stream that could go away, depending on the appetite of the legislature. Additionally, currently, there's a bill, House Bill 2348, and it would require that any change to residential property tax increases would have to go to the voters, which ours would be going to them anyway, so that wouldn't be an issue. Additionally, the tax rate would be capped at 5%. There, again, we're below that with our rate. There is some speculation that the emphasis behind this bill is so they can set that 5% and reduce it in future years, but that's undetermined at this time. It's just a potential. And finally, if it was approved, there, again, it would need to be monitored prior to trying to secure any bonds to go forward with capital projects and things like that. And with that, do you have any comments or questions regarding that information?
I'll start it off. What's the benefit of it? We start with the challenges, right?
Well, the benefit, I would say, is the financial side. So that's why I focus more on the considerations that are more of negative considerations, I would say, just because positively, that is potentially $3.6 million that would add to the general fund for additional products, projects. So that means like our streets and road maintenance, or whatever, you know, counsel would deem during that budget process, or if it was specifically earmarked for something, that's another option.
Sure. Counselman?
Now, this tax, we put this on the ballot and say we're going to do what we want to, would it be specific for something? Because if we say, "Hey, we're going to, you just want some more taxes," I'll tell you right now, it's not going to go anywhere. We need to do something specific on this before we put it on the ballot, because people are not going to like a tax.
Mr. Tarkowski?
The conversation has been that, in the event you elected to move forward with this, and this, by the way, has been discussed by mayors and town councils four separate times prior to this evening, and councils with previous discussion had elected not to move forward. The conversation here locally now is that, in the event this was put on the ballot, and if it were to pass, either the whole package or one, one or the other, that these new, well, this new infusion of dollars would be solely dedicated to a purpose that you would select. What discussion has been held to date is that it would accelerate the construction of collector's streets that would include walkways. So then you would end up having a complete network of pedestrian ways and bike paths through the Prescott Valley.
And that would be something that would be just discussed at a later date, later time, if counsel chose to go, go forward and reference, reference that.
I have a quick question as well. Do we have an idea of how much it would cost for the election, for it to be placed on the ballot?
If it was standalone, it'd be about $150,000, if it was standalone.
Correct.
If you chose to move forward with this, the suggestion would be that it would be in November. There is a chance we will already be having an election as a runoff from the primary that happens in August, and also seeing that you have national and statewide elections, that cost would come down. The standalone cost would be right around $150,000. But this would be shared with the cost of, of a runoff for town council seats, along with all of the other issues that are on the ballot, national and state.
So we have something else on the ballot in November, correct?
No, we do not.
I thought we had to do that.
Home rule, we have home rule in August.
In August, okay.
Vice Mayor?
I always have a terrible time with this topic. But our citizens, and I share this concern with them, are very concerned about how we're going to keep up with the infrastructure because of our growth. And our growth is going to continue, even if there's a downturn of the economy. I agree with Dawn, it has to be dedicated funding. But I am concerned. They want sidewalks everywhere. They want all kind of amenities. We will never, ever be able to do a minimum amount of them with our current funding sources. So I've had a lot of sleepless nights. I don't know how to resolve this, this angst that I have over this. It isn't our decision, it is the citizens'.
And I think that's what the question is, is whether or not it goes to the citizens to decide. They want something like this.
And if they're going to keep asking for everything, that they constantly ask of us, then they're going to have to agree.
Or not, and I think, I think the stance, and at least my personal stance on this, so everyone knows, is, is neutral. It's basically, I was elected by the people of Prescott Valley, and I represent the people that voted for me. And even if they didn't vote for me, I still speak for them. And this gives them an opportunity for their voice to be heard in regards to whether or not they want to pursue this or not pursue it, whether or not they want to give the tools to Mr. Davis to give those things, and that connected, or connectivity that we speak of. So ultimately, I stand neutral on whether or not it's a good idea or a bad idea, but I stand 100% for the citizens to have their voice heard.
I wouldn't even consider it any other way.
Counselman?
So are we able to put out factual information when we put something on the ballot? We are, okay. And then also, what's, what's the 0% tax rate since 1987 mean?
It, it means we technically, in Prescott Valley, tax commercial and residential rental, but at a 0% rate, which is effectively no tax.
So we, okay.
And, and real quick, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, in reference Oro Valley, Bullhead City, do you know if they have a property tax?
I do not in Oro Valley, and it was Oro Valley and Lake Havasu.
I'm sorry, Lake Havasu, not Bullhead, I'm sorry. And we don't know if they had a, a property tax?
Um, no. Don't think so, though.
Counselman?
I just have a concern on who this helps and who this hurts, because I know with all taxation, if you're going to increase it on a certain percentage of the businesses, let's say, or the, just the rentals, then it usually gets passed on. And I think the people that are already in those rentals are stretched to the limit. If they're on fixed income, if they're young, if they're single, I just see that people are struggling already, and they're in the areas that need the most improvement. Now, we're going to say we're going to increase a tax in order to help improve your own circumstance. And it kind of seems like it's shooting ourselves in the foot in some manner. And I worry that we could be turning into another issue of like what's going on in California. So there's just my main concern, that I don't want to oust the people that are struggling in order to increase the area ambiance for them to get to live there, and then they have no other recourse of where else to go. And that's just my one main concern. I don't want to harm the people that we're intentionally trying to help by giving them what they're asking for, and I don't know who all is asking for a prettier place to live in if it's going to cost them more to get to stay there. That's just one of my concerns. So I know you know this subject matter more intently than I do. I haven't been in this area as long, and I want to know, how do you feel about this? I'm putting it back to you.
You know, I think there's positives and minuses. The reality is, it does get passed down, and it usually does get passed down to the renter. You know, it is a tax on the owner of the property, but most of those owners of rental properties aren't going to absorb that. They are going to pass it on to their renter. I mean, you are looking at, if it's a $1,000 rent, you're looking at approximately $28 a month, if we went with the 2.83%, which, you know, that can be a lot for some families and not so much for others. So it really, it's, it's definitely an issue that I think is good, that if you are going to pursue, that it will go to the voters, so they have a chance to speak their mind about it. There is a relatively small portion of rental properties compared to homeowners, so there might be, you know, you're going to have a lot fewer probably people voting, you know, the ones voting that it's going to affect, there are going to be a smaller portion of that. Those are...
I think one of my main concerns, and I'm going to be very vocal about it, is that as minimum wage has increased, it does not go across the board that every time minimum wage goes up, my paycheck does not. And I'm in the private sector, I'm not a town employee. I'm just saying that that doesn't always, because something starts out as a great idea, end up being the best of ideas. Because I know that people who are on fixed incomes can't change what that is. I know that people who are already struggling don't get to choose to make more money, even though it costs them more money to do what they're already doing. And therein lies what my issue with it is, is because it affects the people that own the properties, they're going to pass it on, because they're also not the ones that are living there. And so I just, on a certain classification of something as rent, have an issue myself. And I'm just trying to get it clarified in my own head as to how I see that happening.
Vice Mayor?
A question. We're talking commercial and residential rentals. Has any studies been done on doing just commercial, and would that bring in enough revenue to even make that viable?
With the commercial alone, it would be around 1.2 million from our estimates. Something that we looked at in addition to doing our own estimates was pulling the data from the Prescott area, because they are very similar to us in population and everything else. So they collect currently just under 1.6 million for commercial. So we're anticipating around 1.2. It's a pretty conservative estimate. We might be closer to their number, but that would be what we'd be looking at if it was, if you chose to move forward with only a commercial portion of that versus commercial and residential.
And curiosity-wise, if it was just commercial, what bond amount are you looking at in regards to that? What, what type of projects over time can that generate? I'm not expecting to spend a million dollars a year, but what overall impact does that bring?
With, with a million dollars in, in new revenue, and if you use that as debt service, you could comfortably go ahead and bite off 12 to 14 million dollars in, in new bonds, if you would, that would be dedicated solely to, to roadways. I will remind you, we ended up, many years ago, adopting a .33, a tax increase for specified roadways. That was, goodness, about 2002. That caused the improvement of Robert Road to a four-lane section, it caused Navajo Drive to a four-lane section. But we are still paying the debt service on, on those bonds that paid for what you see out there today. And in neither case were we able to finish the projects, meeting the full length of Navajo or the full length of Robert Road.
So without that money, we'd still just be putting money away to try to get those projects done if it wasn't for that?
Well, the delay on the extension of Viewpoint Drive has been to accumulate dollars to go ahead and, and pay for that. And you just awarded that last week at over seven, $7 million.
But we never would have been at that position without that.
That is correct.
About that. Counselman?
So Larry, when you said collector's streets, is that expansion or maintenance, or both?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I, the, we have just approved, and you awarded the contract, for another north-south collector or arterial street. You have Glassford Hill, you're going to have Viewpoint in about a year, and then you have Robert Road. What we don't have is a fully improved east-west corridor, and the Public Works Department has looked at either Long Look loose, or Lake Shore, or Spouse, that would end up being an east-west collector that would have sidewalk on both sides, so that then somebody that wants to get to a school, or downtown, or whatever, they would end up going to that collector's street and having access to pedestrian ways or bikeways.
So would it help if we did, like a, when we describe what, what Dawn was talking about, if we did a percentage for like maintenance, sidewalks, whatever, and a percentage for new?
Would that do what?
That'd help, help it get through?
I, I would make the suggestion to you that your action, or the council action of about three years ago, when we increased the sales tax, TPT, by half a cent, that you were able to catch up on street maintenance, and in another couple of years, you'll be completely over that hump. And maintenance will be fairly well taken care of, because you have a dedicated revenue stream to cause that to happen. Where we are going to be suffering in the longer term is the construction of new routes or expansion of existing routes.
Where do sidewalks fit in?
They, they're the next step.
They considered new or expansion?
Yes. And not, both, quite frankly. But you saw what Spouse would look like when you went out and cut the ribbon at the intersection of Viewpoint and Spouse. You saw the sidewalks on both sides, the curb gutter, you didn't see the underground storm drains, but they were there. But that's what Spouse will ultimately look like. Lake Shore Drive could similarly look the same, or Florentine going east, east-west.
I was looking over the data from the Citizens Academy, and there's never been one that didn't, wasn't concerned about our streets. And now, they're very, very strong about wanting the east-west, as you commented. When they talk to me, they don't talk about Glassford, they talk about new, improved to take some traffic off of our existing arterials. And I just don't know how we're going to do all of this.
I think that ultimately is, is the question, like, how do we do it? How do we, how do we improve Florentine? How do we get sidewalks on Florentine between Robert and Yavapai? How do we increase that connectivity? And I, I don't believe, I think our rents are already high for the, the regular residential people that are living here. I don't think, at least in my opinion, I don't think that's an option. But if we could just do a little something, and I think with the business approach, it is a little something, because otherwise, we have nothing. And that's just my thought on that. Ultimately, it's the citizens. Ultimately, we just go to the vote. I know, Counselman, you have thoughts on this?
Yeah, I do. I have some comments. First of all, there is a process to take this to a... First of all, there is a process to take this to a vote, even if the council didn't recommend it. The initiative process, if there are enough people in this town who are interested in this tax, in taxing themselves, they can in fact do an initiative and they can take it to a vote. We don't have to do that. It's not an obligation on our part to do that. Number two, I've never, my experience has been that most governments will find a way to spend every dime they collect. There's never been a problem with that. We don't hear about having excess money very often. The state's talking about it, and they've got 15 ways to spend it. And they can't afford any one of those ways. The people that will be affected by this, if it's a residential tax, thirty dollars a month will make a big difference. We've sat here for years voicing concern about affordable housing and how we lose nurses, schoolteachers, police officers, as a result of not having affordable housing. Now, we're going to add thirty dollars a month to that cost of housing. I will not vote for something like that. Number two, businesses. We've encouraged small businesses to come to Prescott Valley. We do that all the time. Now, we're going to find that those same businesses, we're going to add an additional tax on their back. And I think it will have a big impact on small businesses. What may seem like just a little amount, you know, we're sitting here talking about how we're going to spend all this money that's coming in and the things we need. There will always be things that we need or that we want to make a better town. I just can't see adding additional taxes. Because the next conversation a council will be having is, it's not enough, we could do more, and let's just put it out to the voters for a property tax. I see that as clearly, as clearly as the sun shines, that we'll just keep adding one tax after another tax, and I will never vote for another penny of tax, even if it's just to give the voters an opportunity to do it. If they want to do it, they can start an initiative, they can pass around signatures, they can get everything they need and put it on the ballot. But, I won't vote to put it on the ballot.
Councilman, I truly love when you speak out, because I hang on every word you say, because I, you don't speak out very often, and I think it's so important to hear. I think with the initiative, I mean, we could argue that with anything. We could argue that last week with Viewpoint Drive and said, if we wanted to extend Viewpoint to Manly, let's ask the voters if they want it, let's bring up an initiative to spend that money. I think the voters made their decision when they elected all of us on council to make the decision. And ultimately, we just, like I said, I just think we call the vote at the next council meeting, and we just decide from there.
And I understand that. And I accept that we do represent the voters, but we represent all the voters. And the problem I see is that if we put this on the ballot, I personally believe it'll overwhelmingly pass. Because most of the people in this town will not be affected by that tax. And as long as they can tax somebody else
Yes.
to pay for their improvements, they're going to vote yes for it, and I still will not vote to put it on the ballot.
And then, my argument on that is, we're failing as staff and as council, because I drive down Florentine probably 10 times a day, and eight out of 10 times, I see someone struggling because there's no sidewalk between Robert and Yavapai. What are we, what message are we sending them? And I hate to do the scare tactic of what if, but what if a pedestrian gets hit because we don't have a sidewalk when we could have at least had an opportunity to change it? Again, I don't try to buy onto that scare tactic approach, but again, ultimately, the same logic that you have up here saying, hey, you know what, we're going to pass it along to other people? Let's trust the voters. Maybe the majority of them have that same philosophy, and just let's hear them.
Okay, I have another question to that, then. Why wouldn't we instigate a toll, so that everybody who walks a certain way on a sidewalk then helps pay for where we don't have a sidewalk? It's almost equating that you would be taxing the children who walk to school because they don't get to ride the bus. To me, it's going to put us in an awkward place, that you can't take something back. And I would personally rather see a consumption tax, because then you have the option to do or not do something with a consumption tax. If you're just putting it out on a property tax where people don't have choices on what their rent is, they don't get to say, I can afford twenty dollars more a month, but how do I make twenty dollars more a month? It's not an option that they get to then make a choice, and it may make them where they can afford a thousand dollars a month, now think, I have to move to a different location that's in worse condition because I can only go down to 750, or my husband gets laid off, or we have another mouth to feed if they have a child. There's just so many other options that I think we should consider prior to taxing the people who need it the most. And I think that beautification is a wonderful thing, if it's voluntary, but if you're like looking at the tax problems that they're having in San Francisco, and now people are homeless because government came in and said, we're going to tax this, we're going to do that. And in doing so, hurt the people they were trying the most to help. And I just don't want to be in that position when we do tout that our town does not collect a property tax right now. I would rather myself pay a small percentage of a property tax in order to improve the streets, that if I'm going to complain about them, I don't, because I think we have wonderful streets. I think they're doing a great job here. I chose to come here because of how our town is right now. I didn't say, well, and in the future, we're going to change this, that, and the other, and that's going to make my choice to come here. And I think when you're harming small business, it discourages people from wanting to open up another small business. I've been a business owner, I don't mind paying my taxes, the more I make, make me pay more taxes. But, if I'm struggling, it's going to knock me out. And that's just where I come from and the way that I see things. I'll be the naysayer as well, only because I'm in the private sector, I'm not in the governmental sector more than that. I'm just saying that when the wealthy can help support something, that's great. But, when it's there to benefit the people that are hurting the most, I just, I find that to be a tough decision.
I think, Councilwoman, if you could show me 87 other cities and towns that offer a toll on their sidewalk, I would consider it.
Okay, but are those places also?
Hang on a second, I don't think that exists, and to use that argument is a little bit different in what we're talking about here. And the answer is, if you have other options, what are they? Let's get them in front of council so we can decide. Is it property tax for all? Is that what you're saying? Is that fair? Is that what you were saying?
I think the, I think many people can pay into a penny, and it won't hurt anybody. But, you asking a small percentage of the people to carry the burden of the cost, it's going to be a bigger event.
So, you'd be in favor of that, if we all were on the same page of a property tax a percentage? I just want to know if that's where we're, if that's what I was hearing.
I would think that would be probably a smarter option than what we're thinking of doing.
Okay. Councilman.
One of the things is, I understand initiative, once you have an initiative and it's passed, it's out of our hands. We're done. They can say they want to put flowers in the top of the building, and we can't stop that. So, you've got to really be careful with these initiative folks, because you are locked in once that thing is done, and we can do absolutely nothing about it. Just keep that in mind.
You mean...
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, I'm sorry, go ahead. Councilman.
Oh, sorry. So, you mean if we leave it up to the residents to bring in an initiative, rather than us voting to put it on the ballot?
Well, what I'm saying is, my experience, and I've listened to the state issue, was on the marijuana thing. I'm using this as an example. If the people voted for marijuana, a few years ago, they wanted the Department of Public Safety to handle the sale of marijuana. At that past, DPS would be selling marijuana. Now, but, once you pass an initiative by the voters, we can do nothing about it. You've got to be careful with these initiatives. That's what I'm saying.
I agree.
Councilwoman.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're fine.
What percentage absorption do we have left in sales tax increase?
What do you mean by that?
I thought I heard, and I could be wrong, Larry, I thought I heard you say that the max was like 3%, and we're at 2.8 now.
No, there is no maximum on your TPT. What I was referring to is that it would be foolish in our area and competitive, and as a competitive issue statewide, trying to attract new commercial entities, that we do not want to go over 3% TPT. There are many communities that are at 3%, and there are some that are at 4%. The thing is, they have now, when you add the state and county tax on top of the local tax, they've gone over what I think is a dangerous threshold, and that's 10%. So, if you're in a community that is, that has a TPT rate of over 3%, I believe you're really doing harm to some very big commercial entities, i.e. appliance stores, automobile sales, things like that, because total taxation is up over that 10% threshold. I think it's, there's sort of a magical barrier there, that we want to make sure we stay below.
Vice Mayor.
One other...
Oh, I'm sorry.
One other consideration, and it sounds kind of crazy, but what if we taxed water? If we put one penny on every usage of every gallon, people who use less would save money, people who waste and spend more would help pay for more. And it sounds silly to maybe tax water to then help pay for roads. Everybody needs water.
We actually already do have utilities.
But, what if we added a penny to that? What if we made that higher? That might be a better, then you're talking more of a usage tax than it would be of a property tax. It's just something...
Mr. Mayor, Council, one of the challenges you have is that that's a user fee instead of a tax, and you've got to use it for what you got it from. And so, all of those go-to water projects, and I'm not sure we could use them. Now, having said that, there is a case that the city of Mesa accomplished, where they actually take their user fees and they use it for their general fund. So, I can't be absolutely, I can't say absolutely that you can't do that. But, generally, when we use bonding, it says that the fees that we get from water have to be used for water projects.
Okay, see, I'm still learning. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I've listened carefully to every comment, and I've been probably obsessing over this, knowing it was going to be on our agenda. So, for me, I have to go back to a statement I made about us being a family-friendly community. And I can't be true to that if I agree to a residential tax. I can't, I can't be true to that.
I agree with you on that. And I think, I don't know how, Councilman Grossman's not here, but, Councilwoman, I see you nodding your head in agreement with at least that portion of this. Is it safe to say, or am I speaking out in regards to, if it's going to come in front of council as a vote, it comes for a business, a commercial? Is that safe to say, Councilman Packard? Or would you like to see both? It's up to you, seeing where we're at.
Say again?
Just seeing where you were at in regards to, if you wanted to see one or the other. And we should be giving staff some sort of guidance on where we're going to proceed with this.
Yeah, the commercial, I'm a little, I don't want to stop commercial, is the big thing. If it's so doggone big, the tax, I mean, now all of a sudden, we're taxing ourselves out of commercial people coming in here, so if it, I don't know. I would put that on the ballot before the housing, the rental, personally.
And then, Councilwoman, all, nothing, one, or the other?
I'm unsure. I just don't think it's a good remedy for what we're trying to accomplish, because on the other towns that have done this, are they on the growth like we are? I see us growing exponentially, very quickly. And I don't know that, when Sierra Vista is an example, I used to live there. I rolled, you know, when they opened it up to be a big five-lane highway with sidewalks on it, I got to ride my skates up and down the sidewalk for the first time. It was amazing. You want to have the growth, you want to see things change, you want to improve areas. When it was Frye Boulevard, it was named after the town of Frye, and it was horrid. It still has a bad area today, and nobody equates Frye with Sierra Vista as being a good thing. They're also not growing. It's a military town, next to a huge military establishment, and it has major issues. So, just because someone else does something, I don't always think that it's good to follow in someone else's footsteps, unless you see something. If you want what somebody successful has, you do what somebody successful does. I get that, but I don't know that that's going to be what this community needs to do. And that's just where my hesitation lies.
So, are we still at all, none, nothing?
I'm for improvement, but I don't want to harm the people that we're trying to help. So, I would say, to me, it's not, I would like to find a different venue.
Sure. And again, we're not voting right now. We are just, it's coming forth to us, so, Councilman.
Well, I'm not going to belabor the feelings that I've already indicated.
Sure.
I'm not in favor of either of them. So, I, to me, I just, and it dies right now.
Fair enough. I'll make it clear that I am not for either one. I don't want to see added tax to anything. But, I also know the need in regards to where we're at infrastructure-wise, and it's almost like a double-edged sword. We grow, we're encouraging growth, but we're trying to do what we can to improve our infrastructure. And I think that there's a need there. And if we had another option, if when we were in front of staff on budget times, they're like, oh, we have an extra, you know, $2 million sitting over here that we haven't spent, we could use that, then I'd be all for that, and we wouldn't even be having this discussion. But, ultimately, at the end of the day, I see sidewalks and road improvements and connectivity as a high priority among our citizens. And I just think we should come to a vote on at least the business at this point.
Vice Mayor.
Well, I'm clear that I, in my own mind and my heart, I cannot support residential. I'm so conflicted about business that I don't know that I have an answer, other than I will not support residential.
And maybe you'll have some time between now and whenever it is to
Right.
dwell over it. Councilman?
I think the residential portion affects too small of the community. If it was more universal, I'd approve it, but if it's just the residential, it's such a small percentage of people that rent compared to people that own, I would not be for that. The commercial aspect of it is a possibility, but at this point in time, I couldn't support it 100%.
I know, I don't think we're asking for support, we just want to make sure it comes in front of a vote, an actual official vote, whether you stand at one side or the other at some point. And again, it's not a decision tonight, it's just, I think we...
I'd be more in favor of the commercial, but the residential would definitely be a no.
Sure, no, ultimately. Councilwoman?
I'm the, I think I agree with what you said, but I'd like to know from Ben how that 1150 per square foot matches up with other jurisdictions around us. If you could get that to us.
Definitely. And like I went over in the presentation, that is a very rough estimate, if you will, because each rental property is going to bring in a different square footage amount. It's going to vary based on the size of them. Additionally, if there's commercial rentals that are included in there, there's an exemption if the owner of the business is an 80% or more owner of the property.
Sure.
And they don't, it's considered an owner occupied essentially, even if that's not easily discernible on the data we're looking at currently.
Owner occupied, get assessed, or no?
There's an exemption, for example, if a doctor had a practice and he owns the property in a LLC, and then he has his practice under a different entity, as long as the entity is 80% or more owned by the same people, then it would be exempt from that tax, even if that doctor is paying himself a rent for that LLC. So, that's part of that exemption, where it's really difficult to narrow that down until we actually start collecting that tax.
And honestly, I think 12 to 15 million dollars a year is a lot of money for roads.
No, it wouldn't be for a year. The 12 to 15 million dollars is one-time bond.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be yearly. It'd be one-time project.
You're talking, revenue on the commercial is in... You're talking, revenue on the commercial is in excess of $1 million a year, which is an estimate, but then we would end up leveraging that to create a $12 to $14 million project.
And that's all we would get from it?
That's about it.
It would pay over the time of the debt service of the bond.
Right, so how long would it be for the bond?
20 years?
I think it's something that Mr. Davis could put together, too, what that number could actually bring to the town of Prescott Valley, what type of projects that would be worth it. And then, we can weigh the pros and cons of that, I think, connectivity-wise, I think would be important for council to hear. So, with that being said--
With that being said, the direction to staff then would be that, at our next regularly-scheduled council meeting, that we would come back to you, and if I'm hearing this right, with a commercial-only proposal, is that what you're wanting to vote on?
I believe it is. I think that's what we just did just now, by going through the line.
Where do large apartment buildings fall into? What kind of classification?
They're going to get taxed. They would get taxed as residential, that's a residential--
And though it's somewhat of a business also? Okay.
Yeah, because they're residential units, it would be taxed as a residential tax.
So something like tapestry apartments, or the big one right across the street over here, or something like that, right?
Ultimately, I, Councilman thinks it passes overwhelmingly. I think it fails overwhelmingly, just for the record on that. But I do trust the voters, and I just want to go with it. So with that being said, Steph, let's bring it forth.
And actually, Ivan brought up a good point, and Councilman Schumacher, the large apartment complexes are actually a commercial, okay? So if we bring back for commercial, for a vote, that would go out in November, then the large apartment complexes that we have around town, they would get hit with the tax, because those are commercial properties.
Good to know. Councilman?
What defines large? How many units?
Pretty much all of them, I would think. Anything that's over--
I don't remember. We'd have to let you know.
So that would be good to know. Is there any way, I'm sorry, Marty--
Oh, go ahead.
Is there any way, when you say the next regular meeting, that would be like next Thursday?
What is the--
That's our next council--
Yeah, is that the--
Next voting session.
Is there any way we could wait until March to do it, so we can get some of this info back?
It is March 12th, is our next regularly-scheduled--
No, no, no.
No, wait a minute.
Next Thursday is a meeting.
27.
Okay. We could put it on March 12th, or later, if, you know, depending on what you want.
I think--
We get some of these answers back, I'm thinking.
I think there'll be a work study between then.
Okay.
I think we bring that forth. I don't want to do it on March 12th, I think March 12th is a pretty fat calendar.
It's a busy calendar, and actually, the work study on the first Thursday of March is not going to happen.
Right, exactly. So we're going to do it probably the 19th is a work study, if we can have that as a goal--
And then--
--questions answered.
And have your vote a week later--
The following week, I think that'd give us a lot of time to--
The second Thursday in March. The second--
It'd be the 26th.
Fourth Thursday.
26th of March?
So it'd be the 26th.
Is that a Thursday? I believe the 26th of March will be the voting--
We'll bring it back to--
Voting calendar.
Do you want it in work study prior to that, or you'd want us to just send you the information as Katie generates it?
Then just send it, unless council wants to hear it in person, but I think the information-- Go ahead, Councilman.
I have--
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question, again, regarding the apartments. If an apartment complex are all condos, does that change it from commercial to residential?
No.
A condo is a different animal in terms of ownership. Okay, that's not a rental facility. You're looking at apartments.
Can we find out what other towns impact, what has impacted this on the other towns? Not Mesa, but similar, like some of the towns around here. What impact did this have on them when they implemented this tax, or has it been there forever, or whatever?
A lot of them have had it since--
Forever.
--the '80s, when the Model City Tax Code was adopted. But we can look into that and see.
People aren't leaving because of the tax, is what I'm saying. All right?
Correct.
We are one of three exceptions, as was noted.
Yes.
Okay, we'll get you the information, and we will bring that back to you the fourth Thursday in March.
Thank you. Katie, great job. Turned.